January fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. Regular planning commission meeting is called to order. The time is six oh three P M. Before we begin, commissioners, please put away cell phones. If you have personal business during the meeting, please move for a recess. If you are participating telephonically, please mute your phone unless you are speaking. Also, when speaking, please state your name for those streaming the meeting. As a reminder to attendees, this meeting is being streamed live. The camera is located in the back of the council chambers above the clock. Will the city planner please call the roll?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Seals?
Here.
Commissioner Langill?
Here.
Commissioner DeYoung? And Commissioner Stafford?
Here.
And so I have Commissioner DeYoung, I have not spoken with her, so as of this moment, it's absent and unexcused. And Commissioner Seals, you do have a quorum with Commissioners Brown, Seals, Langill, and Stafford present, or excuse me, Brown, Seals, and Stafford present in the chambers, and Commissioner Langill participating telephonically.
Thank you. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Simon Brown, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, sir. Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First item of business is approval of the agenda. Before changes are discussed, are there conflicts of interest to declare? If the commission would like to discuss anything under the consent agenda such as the minutes, they need to remove from the consent agenda and place under new business at this time. Are there changes to the agenda? Hearing no changes to the agenda, the agenda will stand as presented unless objection is raised. Next on the agenda are reports. Do we have a report from Deputy Administrator Nygaard?
No report.
Thank you. Do we have a report from City Planner Wellman?
Just a short report tonight. I just wanted to give a little bit of a, since we last met, we, sort of a little bit of an update. So the city council met in December and they did approve our ordinance, or the ordinance that they had referred back down to us, both of them, O R twenty-four, twenty-five, and O R twenty-four, twenty-three. And I've mentioned this because what's going to be coming up either later this month or in the beginning of February is I'd like to sit down as a commission, and that's where we're going to go over the items and look at the, look at the calendar and say, you know, if this was something that we discuss four times a year, let's discuss it four times a year, and really just look at the roles and go over that. So I'm pretty, I'm excited about that, looking at how everything works here in the city. And then the commission met again, or excuse me, the council met again last night, and I don't really have anything to report on that. And we will be discussing a special meeting in which we're going to be doing some intensive training to put everybody on the same page with regards to your quasi judicial hat and your advisory hat. And our city attorney, Holly Wells, will be conducting that. We'll also be touching a little bit on process and procedure and establishing them as far as how do you put something on the agenda? Do you contact the planner? Do you contact the chair? You know, what does that look like? And we'd like to put some processes in place. And so at this time, may I, would you, was this a good time, Attorney Wells?
I'm sure. So, and I just, I'm gonna, at this stage, you just want me to talk about the training?
Yeah, just scheduling, yeah, we're just gonna talk about scheduling and how that, options, I should say.
Well, the first thing I want to do is actually apologize to the commission because the staff wanted to start, wanted to get training on the books for December, the second half of December. And I was out of country December, except from December nineteenth until January seventh about, around there, and had a trial earlier in the month. And I just, I feel bad because I know this is something that the commission needs and wants and is planning for. I have, it's, so the, really the soonest for, this will be probably about a four hour, did we, were we able to get a four hour time slot for them? Or is that something that we've talked about, how much time I want?
Yeah, we can, and we can do it, you know, on an evening, if we can come together as a group to say, you know, this works. And, you know, there's Saturday, which, you know, is not everybody's favorite, but whatever we decide, I leave it up to the commission. I'm very open myself.
So for me, my availability really opens up after January twenty-eighth. I have, so that's, and I know that you guys had wanted to do it earlier, so I just, I want to apologize, there was really not much I could do except for forego my scheduled two week vacation, which, I'm sorry, I value you all very much, but that was, you know, not something I could do. So I am hoping maybe early, like the first week in February, but if that does not work, then, I mean, I am open and that's a priority for me, then the month of February, whatever works for the commission, I want to make happen. But it is, ideally, I would ask for a large chunk of your time. I find that the training works best when it's interactive, and that means, and it's really the commission training as opposed to council training. With the commission, you are wearing two hats, and navigating between your quasi judicial hat and your legislative hat and understanding those roles and how they interplay is difficult, even for the most seasoned commission members, council members, legislative members, it doesn't really matter, it's a very difficult role. I would say the role the planning commission plays in a municipality is probably one of the most difficult roles to navigate because of the quasi judicial component. You are all sitting as judges as much as you're sitting as legislators, right? If not more. And so generally, that training takes about four hours to go through some of the, we work on drafting findings, talking about how findings are presented, how they're presented in complex cases versus simple cases. What does ex parte communications really mean? What's the role of the planner in a quasi judicial proceeding where they're actually presenting a side? They're presenting recommendations. Understanding that and where all of the potential pitfalls lie is, is difficult and important. But, that said, this is the commission's training, so if you tell me that four hours is undoable, it can be broken down into a two hour session when, then we can follow up with scheduled training at the commission meetings, and so I can bifurcate it that way. The other thing we can do is we can, we can make it two hours and then add, one of the things we did for, with council for a while was mini trainings that were given at each meeting. We can incorporate more of those and spread it out further with, you know, with a focus on a topic. Anything under two hours, I really don't think is going to get the commission where it needs to be.
For either one of you, in the training, will there be time, will the four hour allow time for Robert rules?
That's a good question. I had not, that four hours does not anticipate parliamentary Robert rules of order training. There's two ways we can handle that. That can be something we can either, we can extend the training beyond four hours, or we can have a separate Robert rules of order training. And a really light, I mean, I don't think, I think a training on parliamentary procedure can be done in a more abbreviated way since we do have the chair and the chair, and we can separately make sure we do that training, you know, I mean, I know you've been doing it a long time, so you don't need a extensive training, but just kind of being aware of all those, those issues and walking through them again, and then we can provide a handout to the rest of the commission. That's one way we can handle that, so you have a cheat sheet, a Robert's rules of order cheat sheet. So, or we can fold in the training or do the training separately. Lots of, lots of options for the commission to consider.
Through the chair.
Through the chair, to the planner, this is Commissioner. Through the chair, to the planner, is it possible, since we're having to put off training with the attorney another month, can we proceed with training this month with the city clerk who has this training for Robert's rules and order and procedures? She already has it available. Can you schedule her to give this training to the commission? And still schedule the second training with the attorney?
Well, and I would say that that would, I mean, you're, the clerk is your parliamentarian, I think that's a great idea. And the thing is, I don't want to put this off a whole month, like, I think just the first week in February, you know, I mean, or, I think, January twenty-ninth, I'm available, and February first on, so. So I don't, I don't think we should wait a whole month. But, that said, if you do put Robert's rules of order, maybe we do schedule it a little later in February. I don't know what the bandwidth is for the commission for training, so.
For clarification, are you, are you saying that the Robert's rules of order and procedures, you want to do that and you're available on the twenty-ninth to do that portion of it, and then the other training would go into February?
Well, and I think if the city clerk is available to do that, Robert's rules of order, she is absolutely qualified to do that. She is an excellent, she's, I think you may have one of the best parliamentarians in Alaska, in my opinion, so, in your, you know, through your city clerk. So, I, and I, and I absolutely could do that training as well. So I would say maybe if the planner could talk to the city clerk and see what her availability is, if she, because she's also, she's also, you don't pay her by the hour, so, you know, that's also a consideration, that's worth taking into account.
And this is Planner Wellman, through the chair. So I believe both of the trainings are equally important. One option is, since we have you here now, we could look at the, we could go ahead and look to schedule, you said you have the twenty-ninth available? Would anybody, everybody wanted to look at their calendars for the twenty-ninth?
But would the twenty-ninth be both training, which would be an eight hour training session, or one training session?
So, and I wouldn't recommend an eight hour training session, only I've done those, and the training is not an easy training in the sense that it's not a passive training, not the one that I give, you know, and so it's very interactive, you will all be hopefully engaged, you will be asking questions. I have, I will be giving you hypos about, you know, Cityville USA and having you walk through, I'll have you craft findings. It's, it takes, I mean, generally, when people leave, I think they're pretty much done for the day, right? They don't want to, so eight hours is, is long, four hours is preferred.
So through the chair, this is Planner Wellman again. I, because I don't know the clerk's schedule, that, that's the only concern that I have is scheduling that part, I would be happy to reach out to her and see if she's available and when she's available. Otherwise, Attorney Wells, would you be okay with conducting that portion of the training also separately on a different date?
Yes.
The parliamentary, okay.
And if we have, if, if on the twenty-ninth you want to schedule, you know, anything up to four hours?
Yes.
We can do part of the, you know, we can do the Robert's rules of order, and we can do, we can start the training, the more general training on what I would call general commission training. So we could do that on the twenty-ninth, and then we can schedule the second part of that training in February.
Commissioner Brown, through the chair, I suggest we do the journal training on the twenty-ninth, and then we work around a schedule for the Robert rules.
We can absolutely do that, too, and that might be, because I think, I think that your city clerk is the best person to give you Robert's rules training, you know, in my, and I, I don't want to, you know, I'm not, I don't want to say that I am not good at giving Robert's rules training, but, but, you know, your city clerk is, is absolutely excellent. So I, I like that approach because it gives the city clerk time to find what works for her to come in and deliver the Robert's rules training.
What, what timeframe will we be looking at on the twenty-ninth?
Midnight to four o'clock in the morning.
That's actually the time that we're working. I, I've got some major things at my job that day, and as soon as I could be available, it'd be five P M. Okay, I just.
That works for me.
That works for me.
And through the chair, this is Planner Wellman. Commissioner Langill, what, does the twenty-ninth at five P M work for you?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So just to confirm, that's going to be the training on our quasi judicial, judicial as well as our advisory slash legislative training that's going to be on the twenty-ninth, and I will reach out to the city clerk and coordinate the second portion of this.
You didn't ask me if five worked for me?
One other question. Commissioner Brown? How does that day work for you?
Midnight works better for me.
If it's better weather.
Through the chair, to the planner, then, are you going to get with the city clerk to see if she's available between now and the twenty-eighth to do Robert's rules of order training?
That's an excellent idea, this is City Planner Wellman, through the chair. That's an excellent idea. I can reach out, but I would like to ask the rest of the commission, would you like to have another special meeting in between this, between now and the twenty-ninth?
Chair Seals, I would say that Robert's rules of order would go second in our rotation. We need to find out what our different hats are and the things. I think that's way more important to moving forward than the actual Robert's rules of order training. So that would be my opinion. Commissioners, any comments?
Commissioner Brown, I agree.
Commissioner Langill, I agree.
Yeah, Commissioner Stafford, I think that sounds like a good plan.
So this is Chair Seals again. I think if we go through our different hat training first on the twenty-ninth, and then since we don't have the city clerk available for her comments, I think we'll find some time shortly after there where she can provide us the Robert rules of order training. I think that'll work best for the commission.
Do we need a motion for that? Are we good with everything? Okay.
Yeah, I don't think that you, well, and these are the things that we need to shore up, right, for the planning commission. I think it can be helpful just to have a motion setting the date for the, I don't know if we did that, did we do a motion to set the date for the general training?
Commissioner Brown.
And I, and then I don't think we need a motion to request, to talk to the clerk about the Robert's rules.
We'll see if this one worked. I move that the planning commission will plan a training with the city attorney on the twenty-ninth of January at five P M to do journal commission or training, and that the city planner will get with the city clerk to plan Robert rules of parliamentary procedures sometime in February in accordance with the city clerk's schedule.
I second.
Roll call. Will you call the roll, please?
Yes, and so moved by Commissioner Brown and seconded by Commissioner Langill, and let's see, how do you vote, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Commissioner Seals?
Yes.
Commissioner Langill?
Yes.
And Commissioner Stafford?
Yes.
And that passes unanimously.
Thank you. So at this point, do we have a report from the city attorney?
I have no comments outside of the many, many comments I'll probably share with you throughout the night as we talk about Title XVI.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is the public hearing. We do not have any items scheduled for public hearing tonight, so we move on to persons to be heard. We are now persons. Yes, go ahead.
To the planner, you were going to give us a report as to the status of the Dow contract during your comment. Was that done?
Through the chair to Commissioner Langill, you are absolutely right. I got lost in the calendar, and I, if with your permission, or Chair Seals, may I go back to my report?
Sure.
And just add this one part. Thank you very much. So we are very excited, we just had our comprehensive plan kickoff on this past Friday, and we met with Dow Engineering, and they have given us just a real brief, brief template overview. But one of the very first things that we, that I asked was if they could do a brief presentation to the commission. And so we have that scheduled for our next meeting on the twenty-eighth. And I also asked if they were available to present to the city council because they're a part of this as well. And they have said yes, and the clerk, I've already spoken with the clerk, and so we're going to be coordinating that presentation to the council as well, it'll be the same presentation. And so that's it, and thank you again.
Thank you.
So will they be presenting at, or, will they be presenting at the twenty-eighth planning commission meeting?
Through the chair to Commissioner Langill, yes, they will be at the twenty-eighth meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. We are now at persons to be heard, a time for members of the public to share their views with the planning commission. This is not a question and answer period or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the commission or administration. Anyone wishing to step forward may do so at this time. Welcome. Please write your name and contact information on the signup sheet. When you are finished, state your name for the record, and you will have three minutes to speak.
Hello, planning commission. I'm Dr. James Martin, in a business on Main Street. I just wanted to thank the planning commission and the Public Works, Eric of Public Works. I know that Commissioner Seals and Lang Gill, right, Lang Gill was there at a meeting with the D O T regarding Main Street, and it was a very productive meeting. We met with Cliff, and then we had Edith on the phone from Anchorage, I believe. And I just want to make one quick little statement, it was very productive, it mapped out everything that I needed to know, it answered all my questions. One thing that I just want to mention to the planning commission, at one time, the last plan that I had, it had on-street parking, and we promoted that, we thought that was a great idea. It will promote business development on Main Street. If you do not have on-street parking on Main Street, I mean, someday it may look like Palmer if you do. If you don't, it's going to go right back to square one we're at right now where we don't have adequate parking. So we, Valley County Party, were not involved in saying that we did not want on-street parking. Like Edith stated, we met, and then the mayor's office told them that they didn't want on-street parking, but it wasn't us, we didn't do it. It had nothing to do with us. My wife, my, the other doctor, myself, we all wanted on-street parking. So after looking at the plans, I just want to make you aware of it, that you're going to end up with landscaping instead of on-street parking if you let it go forward the way it is, and the landscaping is just going to be collecting sand and everything from the plow trucks, plowing up and down Main Street, or you can have on-street parking. You can decide what you want there, landscaping or on-street parking, but as a business owner, I would recommend on-street parking. That's all I want to say. Thank you. And you guys have been very gracious to me in answering all my questions, and I'm very grateful for that. Thank you.
Thank you. With no one else wishing to speak, the next item of business is the consent agenda. Would the city planner please read the items for approval under the consent agenda into the record?
Thank you, Commissioner Seals. Tonight, under the consent agenda, we have the minutes of the preceding meet, the words need to happen first here. We have the minutes of the preceding meetings, the regular meeting minutes, December tenth, twenty twenty-four.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as read?
Commissioner Stafford, I move we approve the consent agenda as read.
Commissioner Brown, second.
Is there any discussion? Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, the motion is approved. Next on the agenda is new business, and with no items under new business, we move to unfinished business. We are now at unfinished business. Will the city planner please read the item under unfinished business into the record?
Thank you. Under unfinished business, we have I M twenty-five dash zero one, supporting the goals and initiatives for the annual capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty twenty-six, and this is committee of the whole.
Would the city planner provide an update on I M twenty-five dash oh one?
Thank you. This was more of just a general reminder that at the last meeting, we had the resolution that was approved in order to support the goals and initiatives for the annual capital improvement program. It was requested, though, that the Public Works Director, Eric Schall, provide in I M form some additional information, some detailed information, so he's provided this in, and it's a part of this packet.
Is there a motion to move into the committee of whole to discuss I M twenty-five oh one?
Commissioner Stafford, I move we move into the committee of the whole for the purpose of discussing I M twenty-five oh one.
Is there a second?
Commissioner Brown, second.
Is there any discussion? Are there any objections? If there are no objections, the motion passes unanimously to enter into the community of the whole, committee of the whole, to discuss I M twenty-five oh one. The time is six thirty-two P M.
Commissioner Langill, please, to the chair. I am new to the way the city does this work, so please bear with me. I guess this is the question to the other members, or possibly to the planner. As the city moves through... As the city moves through the CIPs, how is the planning commission kept in up to point on what is happening, when it is happening, how things have changed, and what this is Do we need a resolution, something official, that says the Public Works Director will inform the planning commission quarterly or monthly on the status of these projects? How do we do this?
That's a very good question.
Commissioner Brown, to the chair. In my experience in the past, we really don't have a say-so in this. This is just an informal document telling us what the city is going forward with and just kind of keeping us apprised of what the city plans are. But we don't have a say-so into whether these plans go or how much they cost or any vote on that, is my understanding.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. It's my understanding that it's the same, but I wasn't positive in my answer, so thank you.
Commissioner Langill, through the chairs, through the attorney. Can you please explain the commission's role in drafting and overseeing the CIP for the city?
I can speak generally, but we'd have to take in that ease for me to look specifically at the parameters of the authority of the commission. So, I mean, generally speaking, your authority lies in your ability to make recommendations and review what's put before the commission. And while it may be frustrating and there's, especially when you're very curious and you want to be more actively engaged in these press procedures, the commission's role really is more of a, it's more of a advisory role, at least in the CIP process. It is, as, as commission member Simon stated, it is a, or Brown, sorry. It is a process in which you are voicing your recommendations, your thoughts, and you can do that through a resolution. What you cannot do with a resolution is direct action by any member of the administration. So that is one thing to note. You cannot use a resolution to direct the Public Works Director, for example, to give you a presentation. That's, that's outside the scope of the commission's authority. But you certainly could use a resolution to recommend that in addition to the, the goals, you know, having the CIP in front of you, that you also have a presentation by the Public Works Director, for example, or someone else. So you can ask for it, but you cannot direct it. Does that, does that make sense?
Yes, it does. And it, and that would follow the 2.60 as passed by the council. Correct? Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So I think there was a, similar to what Commissioner Brown was saying, that it was always presented previously, which is here is the list of capital improvement projects. And there's, here's a resolution and then the commission approves it. Do you, that document that you're seeing there has the investigate and, how is it worded? It's investigate and?
I, you know, again, I don't think that changes the, it's investigate and prepare recommendations regarding a capital improvement, but it doesn't allow the city to direct actions by, so what it allows the city to do is like, sorry, Commission Member Brown stated, to pass a resolution, you know, recommending that you have the tools for investigating through questions, asking questions, things like that. So I think that's, you know, by, by passing a resolution that recommends a presentation and the appearance of the Public Works Director before the commission for a question and answer period, for example, that, that is your sort of investigate piece, right? Without the direction, but you're asking for it, not, or you're recommending it, I guess. Asking for it is, is not, does not demonstrate the knowledge and expertise of the commission. You're recommending that they provide you these tools.
And through the chair again, that was what happened at the previous meeting. Commissioner Schall came to the meeting and gave, was here for question and answer. And then was, and then at that meeting, it was requested to have this backup documentation that went along with his presentation for those items.
So is the question, do you think, and I mean, this is a question for the commission. I mean, are we asking for a resolution that requests or recommends a standard procedure surrounding the CIP process? You know, is that, are you looking for a resolution that says, you know, whereas we've had a, we really, we appreciate the appearance of the Public Works Director and the additional documents that were produced after his presentation, you know, whereas this would be a investigatory process that would benefit the commission and the city moving forward. Therefore, we resolve that we recommend that, you know, at X time in the year, the Public Works Director provides a presentation on the CIP process and allows for investigation of the cities.
Commissioner Brown, my understanding, the last meeting, it was a courtesy of him to give us a opportunity for a question and answer on what the city was planning. I asked a friendly request of him if we could have this in writing, so we would just see what projects the city had in mind for 2025. And he was nice enough to give us this list, but it was my understanding from being on the city council and previous being on the Planning Commission, that we have no legislative authority to influence this list. And he was nice enough to give us a copy so we would have him writing what's being planned. And that's how this list came to us.
And I do think, while you do not have the authority to direct or influence the plan in that way, you certainly have the authority to pass a resolution, making recommendations either for the process or for, you know, for priorities.
Commissioner Langill here. I don't think we're going to resolve this issue because of the misunderstanding of our code. So I would welcome detailed direction from the attorney on our 29th meeting so that we have a clear understanding moving forward.
So what type of, so one of the things I want to understand is, so what is the lack of clarity in your, in your code? Because I feel like the process that is available to the commission is to, you can, so basically, investigate for the purposes of the commission is to ask questions and get information regarding the CIP process. So you can, those priorities are set by council and they're discussed at a council meeting. So one of the things you could do, so a commission member could attend the council meeting or review the council meeting, right? And then you would talk about those together, you know, what you're seeing and what those priorities are. You're welcome to. So when you're given the authority to investigate, what that means is you can, you can gather information, but you don't have, it doesn't give you the ability to direct the staff to do any particular thing as a commission. So you can go out there in the world and investigate these priorities. You can ask questions of the staff. You can put, pose questions through the, through the planner that will then be directed to the mayors and the directors. Or you can pass a resolution saying, actually, investigatory, one process of investigation we'd love to partake in is having the Public Works Director or whoever else you might want to name come and make a presentation to us so we can investigate, you know, we can investigate it together at our meeting. So these things are your options. I think what's hard is they give you the, this authority, but you don't have the authority to change or actually legislate on the, on the CIP process.
Through the chair, through the attorney, I agree with you, just that when, I am looking for a clear interpretation when our code says investigate and prepare recommendations regarding a capital improvement program and the compliance of that program with the comprehensive plan. To me, that's not saying the commission receives a list from the public works and we rubber stamp it and say it looks good.
So you're, what you're saying is this, and this, you're looking at the CIP program, which I think it's both. So I think that that's, to be clear, I think it's both. I think the commission has a role in the CIP process, which is, you know, but I think you also have a role in when you do the comprehensive plan process, which the commission is very engaged in determining how the city looks at its priorities and how, and what program it adopts for doing so. So I think you have a role and a say and a voice in both of those processes. You don't have a vote in them, right? So that's the, so I don't know that, and you're in the middle of the comprehensive plan process, right? Is that correct? We have a, so you should see the, there should be a priority-setting quote-unquote program component of that when you're, when that process gets underway. Generally, in most communities, what you see is a CIP, a, a process of setting priorities, identifying them in the comprehensive plan, and specifying how they are considered by the city on an annual, biannual, monthly basis, depending on the community. That's what, that's one piece. But it doesn't take away, we always, so when we look at, or when I look at a code, I always interpret every single subsection to be as, to be as flexible. I read it as flexibly as possible to give the greatest amount of authority as possible. And, you know, and when I say as possible, I mean, I read it as broad as I can without leading to a violation of another provision of state, federal, or local law. So there, I think we read CIP programs to mean, how do we set our priorities in the city of La Silla? Do the planning commission have a role in investigating the priorities set, the program for setting them, and, and advising and making recommendations to council? So I would say we want to do both.
So I have, this is Planner Wellman through the chair. I had one thing to add. So originally, this, part of the reason why I wanted to discuss both OR 2423 and OR 2425 was exactly this. This was one of the items specifically in, with a lot of questions. And that's scheduled for the meeting on the 28th. So one idea would maybe be to bring, as a part of that discussion, if there were any open-ended questions at that time, I might need to reach out to the Public Works Director just to confirm, and also the city attorney. There was one part that I did want to run over with you, too. But, and then we could bring that back on the 28th with some additional information if that works for the body.
And one thing we can do in training, too, is go through each of these criteria. These are, you know, these expectations of the commission. You know, I mean, that's part of the roles and responsibilities of the commission and what hat you're wearing, so we can make sure we're incorporating those. And because the other piece of the CIP process where I see the commission having a, having authority or a voice is when the city sets priorities, and this kind of goes to this first part, but if they set priorities that you don't think are compliant with the comp plan, right? Like, that's the other, the other place where your voice becomes important because you are in some ways, you know, the commission is closest to the comp plan because the comprehensive plan deals with the development that happens through our use districts and our zoning and our land use center. So that's the other role. So I can bring something to add that clarity, I guess, and, and if, if this is helpful, I can bring to our role and responsibilities training a little bit more explanation of each of these duties and the, the sort of perils that lie within your roles, you know, where they, where you might get confused of which hat you have on when that triggers sort of legal issues or, you know, I don't know. How does that sound? So through the chair.
Does that sound, is my question, and I agree with your comments, but my concern is so far as with my time, which is not that long on this planning commission, the planning commission is not part of the city hierarchy on anything. We are kind of, as an afterthought, well, here's the list, here's the comp plan. And that's not what I think the purpose, we should be working as a team, working together. We can't do that as a planning commission until such time as these other, I'm going to call them players, come to us with information, not come to us and say, here it is, approve it.
Commissioner Brown, to the chair.
Because why are the, why are the planning commissions?
Commissioner Brown, question. So are you asking that we discuss this list and make a recommendation to the city council on a priority and, and offer them a priority list for these 13 things?
On, is that question to me?
Yes.
Okay. I am not saying yea or nay to anything on the list. My concern is the planning commission didn't have any concept that this list was even there. We did not have any input until the last second that Commissioner Stanford threw in three more items. I think we should be more involved than that, with the true understanding, does this comply with the comprehensive plan? Where is the funding coming from? Is this going to jeopardize another plan? And to me, that's what the planning commission is there for, not to override, not to dictate, to be part of the team for the city functions.
So I would say, I think that you're mostly correct. And there is one deviation where I, where we might deviate. So I do see the planning commission having a very essential role in not only the creation of a comprehensive plan, but compliance with the comprehensive plan. Everything, the, the body that understands the comp plan the best is the commission because when you are drafting findings, one of the findings that you always have, regardless of the permit or the land use, is does this comply with the comp plan, right? So you cannot act in a way that's outside the comp plan. That said, when it comes to finances, the commission really doesn't have authority. The council's control over the purse, the fiscal purse of the city, combined with the mayor's authority through the administration, that is really going to control finances. So when you're weighing in on a CIP, what, what I, and if I misspoke before, when you're investigating, let's say you're looking at it, you're looking at that list for compliance with the comp plan. Do, are they adopting a priority that is funding, so there's a little, there's your component of funding, that's funding the development of an airport in a rural residential district? Are they, are we adopting as a priority the creation of roads in an area where we're supposed to, I don't know, only have planes, I don't know, you know, but, but it's looking at that. It's looking at the comp plan, which is the development priorities set by the community through that document, and making sure that their actual priorities are aligned with that. So it is appropriate, even if the city doesn't bring you guys their CIPs, even if that's not put in front of you, that would not be inappropriate, you know, because they would, as they see you as. they see you as weighing in when you, when you see that as a necessity. Now, that said, I think we're planner, and, and so this would be where the resolution comes into place. If you want to have that in front of you formally, on a uniform, regular basis each year, then that's a resolution saying, we want to make sure we're reviewing these for compliance with the comp plan. We found it really helpful to have the Public Works Director provide a presentation to us so that we can make that assessment. We would recommend that, you know, one month prior to the adoption of the, or presentation of the priorities to, to council, that the commission be given an opportunity to review those for, in compliance with our duties under the code, or something like that. We can draft a resolution like that for the commission's consideration. But the one thing that the commission, I'll, I'll always warn you away from, is weighing in on the financial components of the development. Does that make sense?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely agree.
So at least it's something, I know we're not going to make any decisions on this tonight, but I just want to give you something to mull over, because I think these are excellent comments, and I do think this is, it's really helpful to start to grapple with your role, and this is another thing to note, you decide that your role. The commission decides how it's going to function in large part. And I promise you, I will tell you where the lines are.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. I certainly look forward to the 29th.
One last question. Is it feasible for us to make any of those decisions you just discussed until we dive into the comp plan, which we haven't done?
Yeah.
That's an excellent question. I mean, I, I do think, especially where we are with the comp plan, and, you know, once you wade through Title 16, and that project is, is hopefully, you know, adopted and we move on, I, I think picking another project, which I think we've already done through the comp plan process, and the planner may have to remind me where that is in the process, but I think you're, because after that, you have Phase Two. So I, during the comp plan process, we may want to use one of our meetings to talk about that process and the implications it has for everything, and that might be a great time if there, to have a resolution put in that packet on, on that issue going forward. And it might not just be that issue, I mean, we can go through it all together, but what, I'm sorry, Planner Wellman, I'm.
Oh, so as far as the comp plan, we are, I mean, we've barely made introductions with each other, so we are like, hello, I'm Cindy. That's where we are as far as that's concerned. And if, since we are going to be discussing this OR 24, I forget if it's 2425 or 2423, oh, looks like OR 2425, I can, instead of putting it on this next agenda, we can go over those rules during the 29th instead.
I think that's an excellent decision.
Because that was the original plan, because I, I saw there's, you know, just kind of a lot of uncertainty, a lot of ambiguity, and being able to really clarify what the rules are and what that looks like, I think is going to help.
That sounds, that sounds like a great plan from my perspective. So I will make sure I have that incorporated in, so I'm hearing, okay.
Is there a motion to exit committee of the whole on this item?
Commissioner Stafford, I move, we exit committee of the whole.
Commissioner, Commissioner Brown, a second.
Are there any objections? Hearing no objections, the motion passes unanimously to exit committee of the whole. The time is 6:57 PM. Will the city planner pre-read the next item under the unfinished business into the record?
Thank you. And that item is 9.2, Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action on the Draft Rewrite of Wasilla Municipal Code Title 16 Land Development Code that repeals and reenacts Title 16 to substantially change the uses permitted in each zoning district, the review, enforcement, and permitting procedures, the planned unit development, landscaping, parking, conditional use, and variance procedures, and the design standards imposed in the city. And this is committee of the whole. And just a note, the discussion on the draft rewrite is expected to be continued at upcoming planning commission meetings. Please contact the planning office after January 14th, 2025 for updated information.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to enter the committee of the whole to discuss Agenda Item 9.2, the draft rewrite of Title 16 of the Land Development Code?
Commissioner Brown moved, moving to the committee of the whole.
Do I have a second?
Commissioner Stafford, second.
Are there any objections? Hearing no objection, the motion passes unanimously to enter the committee of the whole. The time is 6:59 PM. Would the city attorney please provide an update on the Title 16 rewrite?
Happily so. We are making progress, as you've all heard, council finished going through the entire title. Oh, thank you, I cannot, oh, there we go.
And I'm going to bring it up, it's not up yet.
Okay. And so, which is, so they went, I'm, I'm sorry, so I've forgotten my glasses, so you'll have to bear with me, I'm going to be doing this a little bit, but I have it in front of me in writing as well. So I, one thing I will just say before we get going is, if you could go to page 527 of your packet, that's where we have the PowerPoint for Divisions Three and Four. And I just want to check in with council regarding progress on Divisions Three and Four before we go to Division Four, which is where we will.
You said 527?
Uh, yes, 527. Is the city council packing on Divisions Three and Four? Because I think the commission may have left off right before landscaping. Okay. And so I just want to go through where I think you are, and that's partially, and then, if you bear with me while we do that, you know, then we'll go through. But the, so, the approach for the commission is going to be different than the council in the sense that the commission, I, I know all of you have more land use expertise, more familiarity with these provisions, and so, and has spent an independent time reviewing them. So we, hopefully, will be able to move a little bit quicker. I know you have been in the past on the, on the sections, but I want to step back and just make sure that if we don't focus on, if there's areas where you feel like we need more focus, we can do the sort of generalized overview today, and then we can come back and work through those at your next meeting, and hopefully, that will be the end of, you know, that will allow you to get through the remaining divisions. So I see some confusion, is anybody?
And I can, may I, through the chair, I have a little bit of an update. So previously, in, in your actual binders is just the rewrite, the red line rewrite, and the memo. This time, when I contacted you and Zoe, Holly, back November timeframe-ish, we, you had suggested to go ahead and add, like you said, add these Division Three and Four, because that had just been discussed at the previous council meeting. So, with that being said, in your packet is where those items live, and I gave them as a separate document, and that's why I'm so glad you said the page number of the, of the packet, because those, that's where you're going to find those. I did not make separate handouts to give to you for those Division Three and Division Four items. So if we do jump into something where we're actually referring to the red line or the, clear version of the code, then we'll have to, we can, we can look in the packet, and I can keep up and I'll refer to that page number, or we can reference the page number in your standalone, whichever you prefer, I'll, I'll be listening.
Okay.
Let me see if there was anything else. Oh, and then Attorney Wells, this one, this Division Three and Four is not the actual PowerPoint, looks like I'll have to move forward for you in, on the pages. That one's not going to click, because it's just a PDF document.
Oh, okay.
But the other.
My technological challenges are on display. I'm like, ah.
So I'll watch you.
All right. So, okay, so I just want to get my bearings on where you guys are and have us all get sort of back into this, because, you know, as you know, council did take, there's been a little bit of time here, so we want to make sure we know. So one of the, one of the sections, so Division Four, I, I'm fairly certain you finished Division Three. And Division Four, this is the Use and Development Regulations, includes all chapters that govern the uses in each district, including not only the specific criteria for specific uses identified in the proposed code, but your density and dimensional requirement section, your landscaping, your parking, and the sign code. So as we go forward, you should note, I am not going to spend much time at all talking about the sign code. That was, that was amended fairly recently, so that is not a, a section of the code that I delved into. Also, signs tend to be a very emotional area for, for some reason. I mean, and I think the reason is, it's important to people's businesses, and there's a lot of differences of opinion about what that should look like and what a sign, so the fact that they went through that process and they went through it recently, I recommend not, not ignoring it, but revisiting it in Phase Two after you have your comprehensive plan process, and you understand and have all agreed upon as a community, what is happening where within the community. So that would be my recommendation for that. So aside from signs, we would delve into zoning district uses, which is, you know, if you remember, and I think you may have done the zoning district uses already, that's when we talk about specific use criteria, and then the specific, specific use criteria at issue, each of the specific uses. Did, did the commission delve into that yet?
I don't think so.
Okay, all right, so.
Chair seals, I, I don't think, I think we left off right at the end of Division Three.
Okay. That's very helpful. So I would not expect the commission to get through this tonight. I just want to be very clear. I think that would be a tall order, because I could not even talk to you about all of the changes, and, and in, unless you, unless the commission is prepared to stay here late, very late into the night, which, we can do that, I'm here, but I, I think that what I would recommend is, given where we are, and because the zoning district uses is a very substantial section, parking is very substantial, landscaping is, actually might not be that substantial, but could be, you know, there might be a lot of comments on that one. And then we move into, you know, the other areas. So just getting through Division Four, I think that should be our focus, getting through all of Title 16 tonight may be a tall order. So how does the commission feel about that? If you want to get through it tonight, then I will get through it tonight, and I will move very quickly, and, you know, but if we want, knowing how we anticipate breaking it down over the next few meetings helps me pace the delivery of information. So do you want to try and sort of work through at a comfortable pace and just see where we are at a particular time? That's one way we can do it. Or we can decide to finish Division Four and then do Division Five and Six, which is the way that it was broken down for council at the next meeting. So we can do Division Four tonight, and then Five and Six at the next one? Or do you want to try to get through this, the rest of this, Division Four? And I think Division Four took the council, I want to say two, three, two? Yeah, so it took two meetings to get through Four, and that's just because it's, it's heavily loaded. So anyway, I will stop talking and take a moment and take the pulse of the commission if I could, on what approach we want to take.
Commissioner Brown to the chair. I suggest we do a status check at eight o'clock to see where we at.
Okay, that's, that works for me, and, yes.
I think that sounds good for the commission.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to delve in, we're going to take a status check at eight o'clock, and I do think one of the things on your agenda for the next meeting is to try to just get it as empty as possible, so that we delve right in, and.
I do have up on the screen now, this is your PowerPoint for Division Four. Are you okay with this?
Yeah, we could use, yes, this, this works. I think now that we know we don't have Division, like, we're done with Division Three, yay! Right? So I think we can use this one. I just need to get this one, what page is this one on in the packet, do you know? Just so that I.
I will, I will look, one moment, please.
I'm on 531, it appears to be there.
It appears to me 531 of 561.
Oh, I think that, oh, okay.
Division Four, the basics.
Thank you very much.
I can't believe I came up with that. I had no idea where we were.
See, now we know where we are, and that means we know where we're going, although I can't, maybe there's a, but there's probably a power button.
And I'll just check in. Commissioner Langill, are you where we are in the packet, page 531 of 561?
I'm there with you, thank you.
Thank you. I might have to move that closer because it might not be, and I'll test it.
I'm sorry, I got, it's.
Usually I test it to.
I probably could not hit something basic, like power.
It's never going to work, because it has to, it has something to connect to, so let's just.
Story of my life.
I know.
We dome it four.
Yay! I'm going to have to go to eight, five, because I feel like. Can't let the mouse thwart our efforts. All right, Division Four, the basics, okay. So we were just going through the chapters, and I, so I'm going to just pull those up there, and I'm just going to read them off, because it helps ground, at least for me, this is such a Herculean rewrite, you know, and being grounded in the, in the chapters is really helpful. So 1660 is our zoning district uses. When you see zoning district uses, think specific use criteria, because that is what we're going to be talking about, and that's really the change you'll see. Density and dimensional requirements are in 1665. Water, sewage, and drainage systems are in 1670. 1680 is our landscaping standards, and 1685 are non-conforming lots, buildings, and uses. So these are our players in Division Four. So Chapter 1660, so that contains all the general and the specific use criteria. One of the things that the code does now, that are the proposed revision, it really breaks down the language, pulls it out of the table, and presents it in text. And I, this is one of the things that'll be interesting to get the commission's viewpoint, you know, the thoughts on, because there is an argument that just having a table of uses is clear. But in practice, in my opinion, people are looking for the words so they know exactly what's happening with the property. And so it's great to have a table of uses where you can go on and find the X and find if it's permitted or it's not permitted, but to have to jump all over the code to find out, well, what happens with the setbacks, and what's the rule with accessory uses in this district, and what can I do, and what district can I do X use, you know, and not, and having to jump, instead of just having it there, being able to say, this is how I'm going to use my property, what are the rules? And that, I, so that is why, those, that's the, that's the intent or the purpose behind those changes. So as Title 16 exists today, zoning districts are addressed in a single chapter with sections describing the purpose of all the districts. With the district use chart, the planned unit development overlay district, and the downtown overlay district, those are all in the zoning district chapter. Each of these sections is extremely long and contains a lot of information regarding everything from beehives to heliports. It is easy to get lost in the current code and inadvertently follow provisions or texts relating to an overlay district rather than a general zoning district. As a result, uses in the city were given dedicated sections that users could locate by looking at the sections and chapters. As a matter of organization, this not only makes the code easier to read now, it makes it easier to amend later. In theory, this is obviously, from my perspect, perspective, so this is, well, you'll have to. In theory, this is obviously, from my perspect, perspective, so this is, well, you'll have to decide if that, if that is true from your perspective. It also makes it easy for council and the planner to identify uses that have not been addressed despite being regulated. For example, while there is specific use criteria for short-term rentals, no specific use criteria was adopted for hotels and motels. During Phase Two of the Title Sixteen rewrite, council will be able to consider if and how the other uses identified in the district use chart should be regulated, if at all. So, there are very little direction regarding mot, hotels and motels, and maybe that's where the city wants to be. But, Phase Two is a very important policy-based phase of the rewrite, and one of the things we were trying to do is make sure that the code was organized enough for the commission and council to wrap their brains around things they want to see changed on that larger policy front. While the specific use criteria for each of the uses remains predominantly unchanged substantively, each section has been presented in a more direct and clear way. This should allow council and the public to locate, review, and understand the criteria and to recommend any preferred changes during Phase Two of the Title Sixteen rewrite. And I think this is one of those areas where the role of the commission is extremely important, because the commission's understanding of the uses, because you see it in front of you as presented by actual landowners and land users and developers on a regular basis, this is a really crucial place for commission insight. So, as we go through the specific use criteria, it's the commission that's going to think about Bs in one way, or, you know, about, you know, you name your specific use, the commission's going to have the greatest sense of understanding of what that means. Alright, so this is just laying out what they are, so let's talk about what we're talking about. That's, let's talk about what we're talking about.
We're on page five thirty-three, just to let everybody know.
Oh, and I will try to do that for everybody on the phone, too. That is, thank you very much, because I'm, I forget to do that.
There's sixty-one in the rewrite.
Very helpful. It's a team effort. Alright, so I guess the first question I would say is, has, if, has everybody had a chance to review the specific use criteria for the zoning districts? Because what we're looking at, there's a couple of things to note. Accessory uses are separated out. Home occupation is identified as an accessory use and given its own section, because home occupation and the rules that govern it were confusing to me, frankly. And so, this is trying to create clarity and giving accessory uses, it's the same, you know, we want to have very clear parameters on what you can do and where. The specific use criteria for adult businesses remains unchanged. I did not change that language, and that language has been in place, and again, that's Phase Two. A lot of the changes in the language substantively would be Phase Two. We're going to do a comp plan, find out where you want to go, whether or not you want to allow something or not allow something in a district or in the community as a whole, that's really policy-based on where you are now and what the community wants, and all those public hearings and the meetings, right? So, what we're trying to do is make sure what you've said here is clear, and if there's any clear deviation from a use, this would be a time to clean that up. So, there's correctional facilities, daycare facilities, farm animals, helipad, poultry, resource extraction, outdoor fire ranges, kennels or ca, cataries, junkyards, and then the one that we did create, besides home occupations and the accessory uses, we created specific use criteria, short-term rentals. So, in the past, you had a chapter on short-term rentals, that is now gone, and you have a specific use criteria that has been substantially reduced on the level of regulation that is imposed upon short-term rentals, but not removed. And that, I don't know if the, the commission remembers, and I know some of you are new, so what I will say is, that came from the joint meetings with the commission and council. We went through all of these uses together. The commission weighed in on all of these uses as part of that joint body. And when we did that, one of the, the pushes and pulls that we found was short-term rentals, because there was, one research demonstrates that while almost no short-term rental, two, two short-term rentals are paying taxes and rent, I, we have, if you go on Airbnb right now, I would challenge anybody who is listening, and see if you have more than two, which you absolutely do, I don't know. Do you remember the number? Deputy Administrator Nygaard did a lot of work, and I think the planner did too, on sort of looking at the reality of short-term rentals in the city of Wasilla. Over a hundred. So, you have two that are complying with the city's laws fully, you know, and, and over a hundred that are not. And so, what that tells us, or I guess if you subtract the two, you have ninety-eight. But, the problem with the city's short-term rental provisions arguably is it is one of the most restrictive short-term rental codes in Alaska. And, and I think during, I mean, would you say that's a fair assessment based on? Okay, because that's, I mean, that's just from the review of the code, from my perspective. But, it has been done without much consideration for the impact of short-term rentals in Wasilla and the needs of the code provision, arguably, you know, now. And, and again, that is because we just don't have the research. If only two people or two entities are, are paying taxes and complying with city law, then we don't know what a short-term rental owner really looks like in, in the city.
Chair Seals, wasn't there a set number of seventy-five? And if we have over a hundred and only two reporting, yeah, we need to trim this up a little bit.
Yeah, and I think it's just when something is undue, when something is determined in their perception to be overly burdensome, and the consequences for not complying aren't, you know, especially deterrent, then you have a situation where they're just not complying. Now, I don't know that Wasilla, and the question is, does Wasilla want to be reduced to two Airbnbs or two short-term rentals? You know, maybe that is the case. But, what we did was, we took what, from those joint meetings, we got the impression that council was saying, and the commission were both, I mean, both bodies were pretty clearly saying, we don't want to take everything away. We want these places to be safe, most importantly, and this was really the biggest, the biggest criteria or the most emphasized criteria. We want a local contact person. If something happens with the property, we want somebody local to be able to deal with it, to deal with the firefighters, to deal with, you know, whatever that might look like, we want that. We don't necessarily know why we adopted some of these more restrictive requirements, and we do want to understand short-term rentals better. So, one of the things that you don't see as we go through Title Sixteen is we've drafted a registration, an ordinance adopting a registration process for short-term rentals that is no fee, I believe it's very easy, and there's really no consequence. It's, it's a very, it's a, hey, let us know you're here. We're trying to figure out who is here, why you're here, and where you are, you know? And we want to, again, understand what short-term rentals look like in Wasilla so we can figure out what the impact of them is. That's a separate ordinance, but the, but we have that drafted and submitted, so that will come. When, when Title Sixteen is coming, that ordinance is actually coming before the council for introduction, we'll also put that one, that registration ordinance in. The other thing that we're looking at is, okay, we're going to trim down what the requirements are, but we're going to keep these specific, these particular criteria for, you know, that require a local, a person, and, and some other, other, what I would consider very reasonable criteria, but we'll talk about that later. So, there's your list of. So, the other changes that you're going to see, the district uses were revised to utilize only two, so the ordinance proposed the following revisions in sixteen sixty. The district uses were revised to utilize only two type of permits, administrative permits and conditional permits. The changes to the permitting procedures are codified in proposed Division Five though, so we're not going to spend any time on that today. The district use chart was also revised to remove accessory uses, home occupations, and to reflect the changes to assisted living facilities, short-term rentals, and hotels and motels. Changes to assisted living facilities, those changes were driven by the federal, by federal law, making sure that we're compliant with those requirements, and that our definitions make it easy for us to continue to comply with them. So, the proposed section sixteen sixty-ten affords the planner discretion to find an unlisted use similar to another use that is permitted, allowed conditionally or prohibited in the use chart, but subjects the planner's determination to confirmation by the commission at its next regular meeting. So, this gives the planner the discretion to say, wait, the use is not here on this chart, but it's similar to another use that is, and so I'm going to treat it like that other use, but I'm going to get that, you know, but that comes before the commission at its next meeting. So, that allows for movement, but oversight. So, that is one that the, the commission should pay attention to. So, sixteen sixty-fifteen, which is accessory uses, presents a new and more direct approach to the regulation of accessory uses. It authorizes without a permit accessory uses that meet specific criteria identified in sixteen sixty-fifteen. So, this is sort of, we start to see this movement away from permitting every, like, using a permit or a discretionary approval require, requirement for all, all sort of uses within the city. That was, there was a lot of permitting, so you'd have code provisions that permitted something outright that allowed for it, and then yet a detailed, often discretionary permit process and approval process for that permitted use. So, as an attorney, that, my position is, if you, it's okay to allow what you've allowed, right? If you have decided to allow something, then allow it. When you allow something and then add discretion, that's a conditional allowance. And so, making sure that we're, we're honest about that, you know, we, that helps with certainty for the public, for developers, and for, for business owners. So, the first with accessory uses, we, we took steps towards that. It permits garden, garden utility or, or storage sheds of a certain size in the side yard or rear yard setback. If these sheds are removable and certain criteria are met, it allows for other accessory uses in certain circumstances if a conditional use permit is obtained. It also clearly identifies accessory uses as unlawful that do not comply with the provisions of sixteen sixty-fifteen. So, again, sometimes you want to make something conditionally permitted, and then we, we add it to sort of what requires a conditional permit, and that was informed, a lot of that was informed by the joint meetings with the commission and the council. But, the public and developers and users deserve to know, and when I say deserve to know, I think that it actually makes for better enforcement and compliance with the law when they know when something's conditional. You know, so they don't look at something and think, oh, I'm allowed to do this, I've looked at the code, I'm allowed to do this, and then they start developing it, and they're subject to a conditional permit. Instead, they know right away, what can I do that's subject to conditional permit or conditional approval and the criteria, and it's all laid out in the code. So, the accessory uses is one area where we start to see that approach. So, moving into home occupations, sixteen sixty-twenty, home occupation as an accessory use recognizes that a home occupation is a type of accessory use and incorporates the specific use criteria previously applied to home occupations into this provision. While this proposed section provides clear authority to operate a home occupation, it also identifies specific home occupations that are outright prohibited. It clarifies that short-term rentals are addressed separately from home occupations. So, a lot of the confusion that was arising in the code, at least surrounding home occupations, we took a lot of steps to try to eliminate that. The criteria for home occupation will be discussed alongside accessory uses, if that's a discussion that the commission needs. So, some of these, I know the commission has spent more time on, and so if, at any point, this is an area that, you know, that a particular commission member has comments they want to make, things they want to incorporate, questions, you can break it. So, don't be afraid to, you know, break into the conversation. So, when we were working in the joint commission, the joint sessions, both council and the commission expressed a desire to reduce regulations pertaining to short-term rentals. I'm not going to go into this too much, I feel like I just did spend a lot of time sort of talking about those basic, the, the change to the approach to short-term rentals. But. So, one of the things to note is, under sixteen sixty-eighty, both administrative and conditional use permits seeking approval of a short-term rental must provide a site plan, the applicant and local contact information, evidence of a valid business license, septic certi, certification, proof of insurance, and acknowledgement that the owner has received and inspected a copy of the city's regulations regarding short-term rentals. So, it's not, it is not without regulation. We, we maintained regulations that we thought that were reasonable and easy to comply with. The specific use criteria requires specific parking, home inspection, a minimum overnight stay, a maximum ten, of ten occupants, and limited signage. The fire and emergency provisions were substantially retained as well. One of the things that we did is, a short-term rental permit will expire after two years and require renewal at that time, moving away from one year, because one of the things with a short-term rental, as it exists now, if it is appealed, so let's say somebody obtains a short-term rental permit, then there's a right to appeal, and it's appealed, then basically you can, through the appeal process, completely undermine the commission's grant or approval of a short-term rental permit, because it will take, through extensions and dealing with a hearing officer, it will take seven months, eight months. So, you may, they may prevail in the end. Congratulations, your short-term rental permit is, was valid and properly approved, but we just deprived you of eight months of the use of it, and by the way, you have to reapply in four months. So, that is not a very realistic process, and the question would be, would you get, would you register with the city if that was the process for a permit? And I think that the commission would know better than, than I do, but I certainly know there has been at least one appeal, right? So, short-term rental permits are appealed, and that is a reality. Two appeals, so there we go. So, we have two, two short-term rentals that are, you know, that are complying with city law and two short-term rentals that have been appealed. So, I'm going to pause for a second, since we moved through short-term rentals. I'm going through the PowerPoint and explaining these changes. I am not going through the language at this moment, you know, right? So, I'm sticking to the sort of overview. Does anybody have any questions or anything you want to talk about so far? Or are we good to go, just keep moving forward? Because we are about to delve out of, that's it for specific use criteria. Anybody have anything that they're burning to add? And, yeah, one of the things to remember, too, I mean, the commission did add a lot of comments. I had a lot of comments and a lot of input on specific use criteria the first round. If there is, if something comes to you, because this is so much to process afterwards, and I'll check with the planner, make sure this is okay with her, but if they could send their comments to the planner so that. so that I can collect those and make sure that they get reflected in the final draft, if they embody sort of the goal and purpose of the commission. But, and, and I say that for the last round. This next round, if you get, if you get those emails to the planner before our next meeting, that gives me an opportunity to go back and say, hey, we got comments X, Y, and Z, and the commission can, can consider those. And whether or not they want to incorporate them into recommended changes to the, uh, council. I do think that the council is planning on a joint meeting with the commission, maybe two, um, for consideration once this is introduced. I feel like that is, that's, they expressed that at their last meeting.
I think that's when the twelve-year-old is supposed to be there.
Oh, I'm going to be in trouble.
Be summer twenty twenty-five.
Through the chair, yes, so in fact, um, I was having a conversation with Commissioner Langill earlier, and I did, left it somewhat open-ended on that question. I said, I think we'll probably talk a little bit about, you know, what's next, because it was a little open-ended on the council's side as well. Um, they, I remember that, um, Councilmember Crafton had said, I want to get through this, you know? That was one of the things he had mentioned. Um, but there was the talk about, um, the joint meetings, and that, that's the last I remember as well.
Yeah, I mean, I was not as clear either, but I, but I did, the impression that I was left with, because we tried to clarify it a little bit at the last meeting too, is that, um, we are incorporating all of the comments from, um, from the council. Uh, meanwhile, we'll get through and incorporate the comments from the commission. Um, and we are, we've gathered those comments who, uh, uh, Zoe, Attorney Isberg, has, you know, sent detailed run, um, itemized lists of what your comments were up to date. Um, and so our, and our paralegal, um, Mackenzie Milliken, who is fantastic, she listens to the audio. And she's mainly listening though, and this is why it's so important that you guys, uh, speak up if you have something, you know, something you want to make sure gets added outside of something presented in writing. You'll hear me sometimes say, if you do that, for the record, you're asking for a change to line fifty-four, you know, to say X, Y, or Z. That's because, um, Ms. Milliken is going through, and she is listening for those and making all of those changes, um, you know, through the process. So that's sort of the, that's one set of the process. So when we are done, when you guys get through with Division Six, you know, and we're completely done, we will, um, take all of your comments and incorporate them with all of council's comments, add some of our own comments. Staff has submitted comments, um, the, uh, fire, uh, marshal has submitted comments. So we have some comments coming from other areas too. Um, make sure we get all of those in. And then you will have a document that I'm hoping will come before council and the commission together for introduction. Um, that was so effective, I think, having both bodies at the diocese at the same time, from my perspective, because they're a very, you know, that's one conversation. And, um, I, I think that's very efficient, and it's also everybody, if somebody is, you know, if somebody's creative juices are incentivized by somebody else on the other body, we all get the benefit of it. So that is the hope, but, but then planner's correct, it's open. I mean, we're not a hundred percent sure, so. Um, we will be, I'll make sure we're reporting back, though, and when we know, you'll know.
And one, in fact, um, this is Planner Wellman again. One of the, going, going back to the whole want to get through it comment, um, because we do have building season coming up, we have some things that, and, and not to hurry the process along, but just to, um, more of an overview of where we were. But yes, building season's coming, people with landscape questions that are wanting, they have to purchase. I believe one of the comments was made, you know, we, we need to purchase those landscape items now. And although there is something in the code that says, hey, if you're in the middle of this, um, in the permitting process, guess what? We, we outline what that means for you. So, yeah, thank you.
No, and I agree, and one of the things that's so hard to remember, but I mean, I do think everybody is, everything is on track to get this approved or, you know, as reviewed and through the process by, um, or rejected, I guess, I mean, that's a possibility, you know, but, um, by March. That's what I was, council is very clear that they want to do that. I, one of the things I want to remind everybody is, I mean, we started this process, and as a result, people are very eager to see it finished. And that shows that this was a very necessary process. But, you know, I, the, it was not a process that I, like, it is a process that should be done in a way that captures everybody's insight and revises the code properly and, and that the commission members go through. And I think that's what the planner's saying too, you know, and we don't, it wasn't a process that was taken on to get to a certain point. We want to get through it because we have to change it before construction. It really was, and the intent of the commission and the council was to revise a code that's been the same for, you know, decades. And so it's good that, that work is put in. But we will continue to move quickly. All right, so looking at, um, the next section we're moving on to is sixteen sixty-five. This is our density and dimensional requirements. And this section replaces sixteen twenty-four. Um, the following is a summary of those provisions. Sixteen sixty-five oh oh five presents a purpose statement and changes the way fractions are addressed under the code. The current provisions regarding the use of fractions was very difficult, in my opinion, to understand. Specifically, it provides, in calculating the number of dwelling units allowed on a lot or the number of, uh, or the number of parking, loading, or storage spaces required, the planner shall round fractional units above two up to the next whole number if that fraction equals or exceeds. And so that is what the provision was, and this is where we went. Although an example is given, the methodology remains unclear. Accordingly, the proposed revision provides, in calculating the number of dwelling units allowed on a lot or the number of parking, loading, or storage spaces required, decimal units shall round up to the next whole number if above point five zero and down to previous whole number if below point five zero. So these are, so I don't know if we're quite hitting our twelve-year-olds or our eight-year-old level, but you can see, this is, I, the reason why I put this in the PowerPoint is it demonstrates the types of changes that we're doing. But also, you know, to the extent that I am missing something, some of these provisions I cannot understand. Um, and that does not mean that, you know, that might be a me problem. So it's really important to highlight that for the commission and council to extend it, for administration too. So far, um, I think that the change is, has been welcomed by both the administration and the council. Sixteen sixty-five-ten, uh, duh, uh, density does change the density requirements to remove previously unclear requirements that were based in part on access to water and sewer in the rural residential district. So a review and comparison of the density provisions will be presented to council and now with the commission and included in a supplement to the memo if needed. Um, so we have a handout, and I'm not sure that we put that in the packet, so we may just want to go through sixteen sixty-five-ten and those density provisions together. Want to look at that section. But what, in essence, what happened was it looked like, and it was, again, this was another one that was difficult to understand, but it looks like the density provisions were tied to the use of water and sewer. And, but it didn't necessarily, it, or it is not clear to me what led to that, that sort of marriage between the two. And so, uh, we just removed those. And, and maintained the density provisions and requirements otherwise. We did spend a lot of time talking to the Public Works Director before doing that though, to make sure that we were not missing something, um, that was integral to the maintenance of the city's, uh, systems. Does the commission want to, we, so we don't have a lot of time, and I was going to have you all turn to the density provision, but I'm thinking, does the commission feel comfortable reviewing that provision independently? And then to the extent that there is something missing there, we can report back at the next session.
It's on page seventy-eight.
Do you want to, you want to review it now?
Yeah, so it's only,
Okay.
Only four sentences.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, could, could the commission take a look at that provision? So page seventy-eight.
And that's going to be, let's find what page it is in the packet. But real quick.
In the packet, it's on four set, four sixty-seven of five sixty-one.
Thank you.
Of the packet given tonight. I think.
Thank you.
I like having it one person responsible for each. That's actually a really good idea. I had, um, Crystal and I guard came into my office the other day, and I had all these page numbers up on my right in front. She said, what are you doing? And I said, well, it's kind of an ongoing thing where, when things like these are presented, it's always, oh, that's page number seven of the packet. Oh, wait, are you on? And it's across the council and the commission everywhere. So, um, I, I really like that idea.
Four sixty-seven.
And you also want to turn, so where you really see it is in, uh, also on page four sixty-eight, when you look at the table. So on the table, you have rural residential, and it says lots platted prior to May twenty-two, two thousand seventeen, right? And then it says one per twenty thousand or a duplex per twenty thousand with city water. And then there's another section that says lots platted after May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen, and then it's one per twenty thousand or duplex per twenty thousand with city water, city sewer, or community water system. And a community water system must be a public water system that serves at least fifteen service connections used by year-round residents, or regularly serves at least twenty-five year-round residents. But you also look at, so that's, you have the community water system, which is permitted in rural residential. But again, you're, you're, um, it's, it's hard to understand why lots platted before May twenty-second, two thousand seventeen that don't have city water would have a different, uh, density allowance, right? Versus after and what that is and what qualifies. So that, that was the, the goal was just to be very clear, but we did work with Public Works to make sure we understood. So now, when you look at that, so that's sort of what the rules were, and that, I use rural residential, but you can see that, um, that's because this is an issue for rural residential. The other areas were fine. Um, now we just simply say that the na, the maximum density in the rural residential district is one single-family dwelling per twenty thousand per, uh, square feet, or one duplex per thirty thousand. Um, the maximum dwelling and, uh, dwelling units in the R-one district is one per lot. We did not change any measurement. One thing I will say from the legal perspective, I certainly did not change any measurement without running it through administration. That is not, I am not qualified to do that. So I do not want to make any determinations that impact your use of your property. I only want to make sure that we're changing the language and with, with input from your administration making changes to criteria at, or from the commission and the council. So, you know, that's really how I tried to limit what we did. So, um, the changes to the duplex per thirty thousand makes more sense, right? Because you have one per twenty thousand, and so the, um, one of the administrations thought was, why would it be one per twenty thousand or duplex per twenty thousand? You know, it makes sense that you can, you know, that a duplex would require, uh, slightly more. It is a duplex after all. So, but these are the types, it's these types of changes that may impact the public. And so, you know, focusing on them and just drawing them out even in our conversation here tonight is helpful. We'll continue to draw out any changes in measurements as opposed to just updates in language, um, so that the public's aware. Okay, so see, we, we did it. We addressed density. And let me find my clicker. We are moving on. We're on. No, we're not done with density. Sorry. Okay.
So five thirty-seven of the packet.
So it has also been revised, so one of the things that we revised is setbacks and height. And this clarifies setbacks in height, but preserves exceptions contained in the current code regarding setbacks identified in plat notes, um, in plats before a certain date. This is an unusual provision with specific dates. So that's nineteen eighty-six and March twenty-fourth, two thousand three. Those are the dates that we see there. But the city may want to revise after discussions with the borough. We've had discussions with the borough. Um, unfortunately, we don't want to revise them right now, and that is in part because the borough does not, you know, their insight on our code and some of the, you know, some of the, um, idiosyncrasies is similar to our own. And so this will be something though in Phase Two that we'll want to pay attention to, because then we have a better comprehensive view of use within the city. And so maybe there's some change, um, change there. And our grandfather, uh, provisions in the code as proposed are very generous and protective of, uh, grandfathered uses, you know, or uses from the past before the, uh, update. So, you know, I'm not sure that we need to retain them, but I just cannot, through reviewing the historic documents, I cannot determine that we don't, and so we're going to leave them, uh, better safe than sorry. Um, for now, that would be my recommendation anyway. Uh, sixteen sixty-five- twenty is parking. And that section does not substantially change the parking requirements of the cells, which are more appropriately subject to review during Phase Two. Um, and I do think you're going to have a lot of public participation in parking. But again, this, that we had, we did not change it here because you don't have your comp plan yet, your updated comp plan. It does however simplify paving requirements. It only requires paving within twelve months after a road is paved. It also preserve, preserves the ability to have exceptions approved by conditional use, and it permits parties to enter into shared parking arrangements by simply fil, filing the agreement for such arrangements with the planner. So it takes the city out of the middle of any of those agreements. It just, uh, the only thing they're required to do is whatever agreement they come up with, they need to make sure the city has a copy. Um, the, uh, the other thing to note here is by allowing exceptions to be approved by conditional use permit, you allow the city in the interim while it gets through, um, the, the Phase Two process to make decisions that are realistic and make sense and promote the purpose and intent of the code. Um, you know, and that comply with, obviously, when they comply with the conditional use criteria, but that discretion is not currently there. So the water, sewage, and drainage system provisions, we have not changed those, um, but we have relocated them to make sure that, um, they are in the, they are in the, you know, their own chapter. Uh, we are working with Public Works on this, uh, to make sure that we have a permitting procedure. Uh, but I don't know realistically if we're going to end up changing it that much in this phase. I think it'll come, it will have more changes in Phase Two regarding the permitting process for utilities because we'll have a better understanding of uses in what districts. The, um, so my intent was to present the changes to title, to this chapter bu, at the end of the, basically after everybody got through their, uh, got through their review. I am just, what I am seeing in my discussions with Public Works is we're probably going to be looking at, um, later. But that said, I'm not sure, so if it does come out, that'll be a section that will be flagged during the ordinance review, and we'll walk through. We also need to make changes that correspond to the changes in Title Sixteen for the section, water, sewage, and drainage, in Title Thirteen, which is, and while all the changes we're really looking at water sewage and drainage, in Title thirteen, which is, and while all the changes we're really looking at is, what kind of notice do we need? What type of permitting do we want? If a person is building something or they're using something that has a burden placed on utilities, do, what do, how much do we wanna know and/or approve going into that use? The city is in a very unique position. We have a very unique wastewater management system, right? I mean, it, as far as, or at least relatively speaking. And, um, it's, these are difficult things to manage and we need to manage them well. So that I, what I anticipate is after the adoption of Title sixteen, with the current provisions that are in the water sewage and drainage system sections of the, of the current, uh, Title sixteen, there'll be a separate ordinance that really deals solely with these public utility pieces so that we can delve in, um, more thoroughly. Landscaping, so.
This is page five forty of the packet.
Thank you. I'm not gonna any better at saying that I will. I'm gonna get the next page. You guys are gonna be proud of me. So, the landscaping standards provision has been comprehensively revised to adopt a landscaping plan that respects the use of native vegetation while imposing criteria on landscaping within the city that will promote and further the development and beautification provisions in the comp plan. So one of the things, when we did a landscaping overhaul, we did an overhaul. We have removed, I think we've taken something that was maybe thirty-some pages, uh, maybe forty pages, and it's now ten. So there has been a drastic reduction. That said, there still remains, um, provisions, landscaping provisions. There, and there's an emphasis on, on natural vegetation. So we retained a lot, um, for, from the legal team's perspective. We did not take any steps that removed requirements without talking to Public Works and to the deputy administrator and looking to other codes. We started our process by looking to Saldatna, which had a strong emphasis on native vegetation and not requiring, um, the use of trees from outside and, and we also, there was a lot in the code that I'm not, I really don't know where it came from. And it was, it far exceeded what we see in even some of our larger communities. So that was removed, but again, we grounded ourselves in other communities, comparable communities similar to, um, to Wasilla. The landscaping standard, oh, so, yes, so they've been reduced from thirty to ten. So, um, we have also included in the packet separate redline versions of the landscaping and the density and dimensional standards, I believe. And that, the reason why is those are such, those have been very important, um, chapters to the community and I know to the commission. And so just having a separate redline where you can really see it and without being, um, I find that the general redline is not always that helpful. It's there so people can follow the changes or see them if they want to. But I use the clean version or I use the, the, the small redline specific to a chapter because they're more accurate. So, and that is one thing to note. I'm sure Zoe told you this, but this redline that you have, that is generated by a computer through a comparison function. Um, which means it gets it wrong all the time because you're just putting two documents and saying compare. And then it spits this out. So that's why if there is something that's really important where you're trying to grasp the differences and, and what we're presenting isn't getting you there, please let the planner know because we'll generate a smaller redline and it'll be hopefully more helpful.
Through the chair, so in fact, that was something that you were seeing this time, first time in the packet. Um, those smaller condensed ones, and that's why they were separated out.
Yeah, and, and that is, we only did that for, again, those two, those two chapters because that seemed to be where it was needed most. Oops.
I need to break. Um, so I'm doing a eight P M. check here.
Okay, I am going to make the next three minutes count. Can I, I can, I feel like we can really go, let's make it, make it count. Okay. Um, and we're on page five forty-one. So you haven't done that yet, so that's, that's, uh, that's making it count. Okay, so the landscaping standards on page five forty-one, you will see a list of the standards. And you can see how we've organized it. We have the purpose, the applicability of the standards, exemptions from the standards, what a la, the landscaping plan, general requirements and standards, specific landscaping standards for parking and for buffering, um, specific landscaping standards for residential, the inspection process, maintenance and replacement, landscaping standards waivers, uh, violation and penalties, and a disclaimer. So this is it for landscaping, which we felt like we were really trying to compartmentalize it so people, uh, end up, so the public can actually navigate it in a way that, that felt efficient and useful. The following list is a list of the substantive changes to the landscaping provisions, and I'm on page five forty-two now. While the proposed code exempts single-family dwelling units and duplexes from submitting a landscaping plan, it imposes the provisions of the chapter on all properties within the city except temporary uses approved by a temporary use permit, airport leases, and areas authorized by the city for public or private parks, golf courses, playing fields, or playgrounds that will be retained in previous grown cover. So one of the things we did is we greatly stepped back the landscaping plan. But the Public Works Director and the Deputy Administrator and I met, and I think the planner was there too. So what we did was we pulled up, um, or what the Public Works Director did was he pulled up a, like, satellite image of Wasilla and we, and he actually walked us through what the properties looked like and what landscaping they had in these residential districts. And it was determined that most of them have, are, are in full compliance. The vast majority of them are in full compliance with the landscaping requirements proposed. And so that, so while they're not, while this landscaping, um, section or chapter does not require that, uh, family, that the single-family dwelling units and duplexes submit a landscaping plan, it does require them to have specific coverage, um, of their, of their lots. Um, so the other thing is the code expressly requires design to take into account existing trees and incorporate those trees and vegetation where practical. So we're gonna leave off, um, on page five forty-three, which is our list of landscaping, of additional substantive changes to the, um, landscaping provision. Unless you want to afford me, like, two more minutes so we can get through those general provisions and start talking about landscaping, parking, when we return.
We will give you three minutes.
Woo-hoo, all right. I'm gonna take my three minutes. So the following is a list of the substantive changes to the city landscaping provisions. I'm on page five forty-three. Sixteen eighty-twenty-five contains a clear-cutting prohibition similar to that imposed under the existing code, but it limits the prohibition to areas within seventy-five feet from the high watermark of any body of water. However, developers, owners, and occupants are prohibited from removing vegetation on undeveloped residential zone slots where the removal will result in the retention of less than fifteen percent of the vegetation on the lot, on a lot that's under forty thousand square feet, or less than twenty percent retention on a lot that's over, uh, forty thousand square feet. While these numbers originated in other communities, the Public Works Director examined the properties within the city. And this is, you know, I, I think I walked you guys through this with, uh, the aerial map. Residential lots are also required to have ground cover, but it's not limited to lawn coverage. So that was one of the things that we heard a lot of complaints about publicly. And the commission also shared, um, some thoughts about that at our joint meeting. If you recall, is the difference between ground cover and a lawn, actually requiring properties to have a lawn, which is, you know, we're in Alaska, and that was the comments. The comments were, there's a lot of ways that we create landscaping in Alaska outside of a lawn.
Would you explain what ground covering is?
Yes, and so, and we, and we have a definition for ground cover, so we should probably just look at the definition because I don't wanna be imprecise, so, um, but it can be generally ground cover. It can be sod, it can be, so here it can be, uh, it can be a lawn. You can absolutely have a lawn, and then I think it can be mulch, um, and it can be rocks in certain. Sixteen eighty, oh, let's see, let's go to, navigate. All right, in all honesty, I am having a hard time.
Yeah, I couldn't find the definition anywhere.
I know. So, I mean, I know one of the things, so it was the definition of mulch that we revised that added the reference to rocks. Thank you. So I think, I'm on page one twenty-nine, so let's see.
It's in, did, uh, one eleven of one fifty.
Eleven?
Yeah, one eleven of one fifty.
But it doesn't really give a definition.
It doesn't define ground cover.
Yeah, it talks about it, but I couldn't find a definition.
But I think what I'm worried about is sometimes on these, I've defined it in a way that, you know, so I make sure I didn't say like cover slash ground, right, so, um.
Well, I don't wanna cut into your three minutes, but maybe.
Yeah, you've really taken away my three minutes.
Next meeting, if you could bring us back a definition.
Absolutely, and we may not have a definition because when I think about the definition, I know that. So what I would say is I know we took a lot of time to think about how we define mulch, you know? And so I don't, so I'm gonna just add that because that might be something that we need to get into this rap.
Because I, I have concerns when you say ground covering because what I think and what the chair think may be two different things, and I want lawn.
I want a blue tarp.
So I, through the chair, I, I think I have found something. Um, so page, did somebody already say page fifty-one of the packet?
No, I don't think so.
Okay, so page fifty-one of the packet, um, and I'll wait until everybody gets there. And so actually, you know what? You're probably not going to have this. This is going to be thirteen, page thirteen of one fifty, if you're using your, um, your folder.
Thirteen, I'm there. And ground covering, the definition.
Okay, so you know what just happened to all of us? Just to be very clear in this.
We got lost in the weeds.
We got lost in the overly district. No. But I do, I, so what happens is because, and so one of the things that you know for, for your review of division three is we didn't take out the downtown, downtown overly district. Um, so that definition, or the, you know, and the sign section also has, um, definitions, I believe, although I may have incorporated those. But the downtown overly district has, um, you know, is, anyway, I, actually, now that I say that, I think I may have in the final draft. I may have incorporated those definitions. So now I wanna go back. What page are we on? One?
Thirteen of one fifty in the book.
But what page are we on before?
Oh, we were on a one eleven of one fifty.
Yeah.
And interesting, just to add something, interestingly enough, so I'm going to speak. I'll give both page numbers, um, thirteen of one fifty, if you have your binder, and then fifty-one of five sixty-one. But interestingly enough, on page fourteen of one fifty and, or fifty-two of five sixty-one, there's a second definition of ground cover.
Oh, yeah.
But I think, so this is, but I think this is one of the things that we actually dealt with in council, wasn't it? I think this is one of the, um, we ended up with, but I, I'm just trying to remember. This came up with council, and so it's either in our comments, you know, it's already incorporated into our comments where changes, where they picked one of the ground, well, it's, although I feel like it is, I'm, I, it is not that perfect for you guys because they did actually select a ground cover definition. So.
Again, next meeting.
While we're halfway there, we need to bring that definition too, I think.
Next meeting, if you could, uh, give us one definition.
Yes, so what we'll bring back, but I just don't know which one they picked. We've actually had them vote.
I don't like either one, I don't like either one of these.
Ground cover definition. Really?
Yes.
So you do not, you do not like either one of these?
The second one, uh, chair seals. The second one is on page fourteen of one fifty, intended to prevent the growth of invasive species. And the other one is intended to, uh, to retard weed growth or provide erosion control. So one is to, we, one is for weeds and one's for invasive species. But, um, weeds aren't invasive species unless, you know, they're dandelions because you can eat those, so.
So which one do you prefer? So see, do, do you want, you have two choices. You can weigh, uh, weigh in on which one you prefer now or I can, uh, tell you, I can tell you first what coun, which one council preferred, which one they told us to.
Well, tell us which one council preferred.
We're against that.
I don't know, okay, I will bring, I will bring you a report on what they preferred. And I think there may have even been, and I have to go back, and I, you know, this is just, it's just a big project. So my memory is not what I, I took these from somewhere, right? And so one of the things that I did with councils, report where things came from, usually if we had a, um, but I don't, I don't recall off the top of my head. So I will have that information regarding ground cover, where those definitions came from and which one council preferred, and then we can decide. And then I think that I may have weighed in which, with which one I preferred, but I don't, I don't think I had much of a preference. Um, but I do wanna, so I still wanna go back because if this happens again. So what was the page in which we went to a definition section that did not have the ground cover definition? Because I'm not finding.
So on page one eleven.
Page fifty-one.
Yeah, I think it was one eleven.
Page one eleven, one fifty, it just says ground cover, all residential lots will have an established lawn, sod or ground cover. That was one eleven of one fifty.
But I mean, what was, didn't we go to, oh, here maybe is the definition section. Here it is. This is the definition section at page one twenty-nine. So why is this not here?
So let's get everybody on this.
This is the signs, okay, so that, okay, so what I wanted to point out, just so we, it doesn't happen to us again, is the signs section code as written remained untouched. And that has, not untouched, that's not true. I made consistent changes to some language, but it substantively remains untouched, which mean, it maintains its definition section. So that is not the first time that I, at least I have gone to that definition section and been like, oh, no, maybe that's why we have two ground cover definitions. I might have gone and been like, there's no ground cover, drafted it, you know, put it in, so that's, um, so it's just something to note, that there is a def, there are definition sections in here and we wanna make sure, um, we find our way to the right one. That's a note to myself more than anyone. Okay.
Could you tell me again the page number that you didn't find the ground cover?
Yes, so go to.
And I'm just going to reference on the record in case anybody is following along.
Yes, one eleven, wait, let me find it.
Of your binder, so one, okay, here we go.
No, of the, this is, I'm in the, I only have your packet, one eleven of your packet.
Oh, one eleven of the packet. Okay, one moment.
Oh, but let me go back. It's not exactly there. It's your sign code of provision, so let's see.
Sixteen eighty point oh four oh.
Sixteen eighty oh four oh.
One twenty-nine, sorry, okay, sixteen eighty point oh four oh.
That's on one eleven or one ten, actually.
Is it one twenty-nine?
Oh, okay, so that's going to be pa, so I'll do both. It, where you cannot find it is page one twenty-seven of five sixty-one in the packet, also known in your binder as eighty-nine of one fifty, and then continued on to the next. also known in your binder as eighty-nine of one fifty, and then continued on to the next page, where there's no mention of it.
Because that's the sign code, that's the sign, right? So it would not make sense to talk about ground cover, which is, but I mean, that's, you know, it's a really good, because, again, we'll, if that happens to us again, I think that happened with council, there was another definition, the same thing happened, where I'm like, "Oh, boy, we didn't define it." Unfortunately, that was not one, or fortunately, that was not one we defined twice, which, again, I think that there was also something to note with the definitions, they, there are a few that are out of alphabetical order, so that's something that's being corrected in the, so to the extent, the commission, we are not proud, this is a very big project, and there will be mistakes. If you have any corrections, even if you're like, "Look, I just caught that you forgot a T, and I'm embarrassed to tell you that, because lawyers don't like to hear that they're wrong," please tell me that we forgot a T. You know, as much information as we can get, it's gonna make it, you know, better. So. Where were we? All right, so we are going to have a ground cover discussion next time.
We're on page five forty-three in your packet.
Okay, and I'm trying to remember which criteria I stopped at. I think I, we talked about the, so we say, oh, here, here's where we stopped, residential lots are also required to ground cover, but it's not limited to the lawn. There we are, okay. And so one of the things to note, lawn sod or ground cover is permitted, this is, I don't know, I think this is sort of a big one, if people have been obligated to have a lawn, a lawn takes a lot, it's a much, that's very different than sod, or the way that we have to find ground cover, right? So that's something that the commission may want to really look at, so in preparation of our discussion for definitions. So for every one hundred lineal feet of frontage along a right-of-way, or a portion of a right-of-way, at least one tree, meeting the general standards, must be retained or planted in the front yard. So this is, again, these are general provisions for landscaping, we'll get into landscaping for a parking lot, which there's been some changes there, those changes were developed with the meeting of the planner, and the deputy administrator, and the public works director, and the Menards Center Director. I am going to stop there, unless anybody has any objection, because I feel like that is a good stopping place. The other thing we could do, if you want to, is we could just get through landscaping completely, and stop at non-conforming lots.
We only got one more page. One more page.
Go ahead.
To the attorney, if we're going to quit here, that's fine with me, but on page five forty-seven of five sixty-one, the first is the city's land use number three, it states, "planning slash plating authority, as the city does not have plating authority, shouldn't that be struck?"
No, so that reference, that, so that's, that slide deals with the interplay with the comprehensive plan, so it says that the city's land use regulations are governed by three sources of law, and one is the planning and plating authority delegated by the borough and by the Alaska Legislature. So one of the things that we're looking at is the plating laws regarding plating authority, but your point is well-taken, it's really important, and the lack of authority to plat for the city will really come into play when we're talking about the subdivision provisions.
But we don't have that, the city does not have that authority, either from the borough nor the state.
We do not have the authority to plat from the borough or the state, but we have a role in plating, and that's reflected in our code, and we also have a role, so one of the things that we do with plating, we have a, we have subdivisions, and we have subdivision agreements, which are reflected on plats, and other, there's other aspects of that, so it's the, it's, we have delegated authority by the borough that impacts our planning, plating authority, right? That impacts that authority. So if you But you're right, we do not have plating authority, that is absolutely correct. But we do, are engaged in the plating process, right? And we have authority delegated by the borough for the specific roles we play in that process.
Well, you're the attorney, I'm gonna have to disagree with you on it, but so be it.
Okay, so, and you, you know, if we want to talk about it more, like, again, I am not saying that the city has the plating authority, this is just, all we're talking about is the interplay with the comprehensive plan, and the city's land use regulations are governed by three sources of law, and it talks about those sources of law. So, that is not a part of the code, that's just my PowerPoint presentation, but if it would make you feel better, I can edit that PowerPoint presentation and remove the word "plating," and make it a little bit more specific, that it's planning authority delegated by the borough, and the city's role in plating through subdivision. So if that would make it, if that feels more accurate, I can do that.
Well, I just don't think it would be fair to the public to have that verbiage "plating" in there, because someone could assume that the city has the plating authority, which is not true.
But the, but the borough has delegated components of plating authority to the city. If you look at the, at borough's plating authority, and the role that the city plays in the plating authority, and how abbreviated the borough's role in its own plating authority, although it continues to have that authority, absolutely. You know, this is something that, you know, the city does have, have a role that they play in that authority, right? We weigh in, but you're right, we are certainly not the, we're not plating. Okay, so, can we, do we want to return, or, it's eight twenty, so now we're kind of in a different situation, I'm not sure, what would you like to do?
Oh, if you're to me, I mean, that's fine, it's just that it might be something the council wants to consider.
My PowerPoint slide? Wait, I think I'm confused as to.
The verbiage "plating."
Generally, the, so that is the verbiage of my PowerPoint slide, generally, the council does not weigh in on the verbiage of my PowerPoint slide, but I agree that you are absolutely welcome to disagree with me, and, and so we will, that's noted, and I will even, I want to make sure that the slide reflects most, as most as I heard as possible, so I can change that sentence, if that'll be, you know, if that will be helpful. But again, that is not in the code, and that is my take, you're right, I have been practicing municipal law for twenty years, and I've spent a lot of time drafting land use provisions, planning and plating provisions, and so I do find that there is a role played by the city in the plating provisions of the Matsu Borough. But yes, they have not delegated plating authority wholly.
Okay.
Okay, all right, so moving on to, let's see, and we can also, we can, you know, if the commission decides they want a memo on that, or anything like that, you just let me know, and I can make sure I provide that too, because your role with plating and planning is very important, you know, and where it begins and ends. We can also just address it a little bit in roles and responsibilities. Okay, sorry, I did not mean to derail us, let's get back on track and see if we can just get through this really quick.
Stopped on five forty-four.
Five forty-four, okay.
Oh, I apologize, I thought we had decided that that was it.
Well, I'm just gonna run through this really quick, unless, Chair, you want me to?
No, I think we should get through this real quick.
Okay. So, "While it's difficult to decipher all of the buffering requirements in current code sixteen thirty-three sixty, the buffering requirements proposed in the ordinance only apply when the parking lot is adjacent to a residential zoning district, multifamily housing of four units or more is adjacent to a R1 or R2 district, a commercial or industrial use is adjacent to a residential zoning district, or the use is an outdoor storage facility, finally, or the use is an outside kennel, cattery, or warehouse, regardless of the neighborhood." So, that's in sixteen eighty thirty-five, that, the proposed specific landscaping standards for buffer landscaping. The general standards, oh, I think I am one slide ahead of you guys, yeah, here we go, this is page five forty-four, "The general standards retain provisions regulating evergreen tree height at a minimum of six feet." I believe council had some comments regarding this, and so this may be eliminated. Again, all of those provisions are being incorporated into the next draft.
Chair Seals, I'll probably send you a memo on this, because I have some, some issues with tree height and placement.
That's wonderful, yeah, no, that would be great. Grass seeding, which requires native grass stocks and lawn seed mix, and earthwork erosion protection, so those are, those remain regulated. But the extremely specific requirements regarding individual trees, tree critical root zones, tree crowns, and maximum disturbance areas of the tree have all been removed. All right, so are we? Are we?
One more page.
One more page, where is it?
We have one more page.
Okay. "The following is a list of substantive changes to the city landscaping provisions regarding parking. Parking lot landscaping is required when a structure is erected with a parking lot of forty or more spaces, and existing structure is expanded by ten percent or more of the building footprint, and has or requires a parking lot with forty or more spaces, or property changes from one use category to another, and has or requires a parking lot with forty or more spaces, or a standalone parking lot is constructed having, once again, forty or more spaces, without an accompanying new or expanded structure. When applicable, an area equal to at least five percent of the parking lot must be devoted to landscaping. Currently Title XVI requires," I'm a little behind, so, "currently Title XVI requires fifteen percent of the parking lot to be landscaped for a lot with forty or more vehicles, and requires landscaping for parking with zero to four parking spaces." So you see that change, there's a shift down, and this, the reason for this was, and I think we had, we talked about this during the joint sessions, but this also came up often with council, and, and the public works director weighed in, and the, actually, I think we got, this was, the Menards Center Director had a lot of comments, because, one, it impacts the Menards Center parking lot, but two, that, that interplay between maintaining a parking lot and landscaping and dealing with the snow and snow storage, you know, making sure this actually reflected the reality of dealing with that, and in Alaska, and specifically in this area, was important, so that, to the department, departments, I should say. And now we move into non-conforming lots, buildings and uses, and we are at eight twenty-seven, so I think we may want to start here. I don't know if Commissioner Langle, I don't know how, I feel like, I'm not sure if she wants to go forward with the landscaping standards, or, I wasn't, I, I think I moved really fast to get through those last two slides, so if I, if I, I didn't quite understand what Commissioner Langle was saying about whether she wanted to go or stop, I just.
Commissioner Langle, did you think that we were stopped? Before?
So it's fine, there was some discussion, I think we were on page five forty-four, whether to stop at that point, and one of the commissioners said, "But stop," and I thought we were stopped, and that's the only reason I looked up. So it's fine, it's fine.
Okay, I apologize, I wasn't sure, I was like, "But I'm gonna get through the two slides, and then I'm gonna stop and, and check in," so I guess, that was my ask for forgiveness approach.
I think it's more formal when we're not in the committee of the whole.
All right, so I think we're gonna stop there then, yes? Or, Chair, do you?
Yes, is there a motion to exit the committee of the whole?
Commissioner Stafford, I move that we exit committee of the whole.
Is there a second? Is there any discussion? Are there objections? We are exiting the committee of the whole, the time is eight twenty-eight PM. We are now at communications, are there any comments on the communication items as presented?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just a question for the planner, let me make sure I'm on the same spot we got each one on the agenda.
We're at ten, point ten in communications, and there are three items.
Permit information.
Yes, permit information, enforcement log, Matt Nuskas, who sit in the Borough Planning Commission's agenda, that's where we are right now, so if you have any comments.
Yeah. I did just have a question for the planner on the permits issued, it's number AA twenty-four dash zero 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 two four three, it says administrative approval permit subdivision, and which, I could get a better understanding of what the subdivision entails.
Through the chair, this is Planner Wellman, that's an excellent question, it actually dovetails right into what City Attorney Wells was referring to. So what happens in the process, and we'll learn more about this, I'm not sure exactly when, but at some point within the training process, the first step when somebody wants to subdivide a property, is they must come to the city to obtain a subdivision permit. And so we, they go into our citizen serve portal, they submit all the correct documentation that we require, including just a site plan, so to speak, or an as-built, and then we go through a review process with the different departments, including planning, public works, and our finance department. And then, once approved, so we, that's what you're seeing there, is the approval of that subdivision, but then, once approved, they go on to the plating portion, and they go to the borough. The borough is very consistent in that they have a list of items in which they're, they require in order to platter, and one of those items is the subdivision permit from the city, it's an acknowledgement that they have been in front of the city and obtained a permit. Does that come with that?
Yeah, that's fine, thank you.
Are there any other comments on communications items as presented? We now move to audience comments, we are now at audience comments, a time for members of the public to share their views with the commission. This is not a question and answer period, or a time for dialogue. Speakers may be referred to administration, or issues raised may be taken under advisement by the council or administration. Is there anyone present that would like to address the commission at this time? With no one present, we now move on to comments. Planner Wellman, do you have any comments this evening?
I think I'll, thank you very much, and I think I'll just touch on the meeting, the next meeting dates, but first, I'd like to thank Dr. Martin for coming out tonight, we appreciate, I appreciate your input regarding the items that you've addressed with the Main Street changes, I can't think of the, oh, the Main Street couplet, there we go. And so the upcoming meetings, we have our regularly scheduled meeting for the twenty-eighth, and then we'll have a special meeting scheduled for the twenty-ninth.
Thank you. Deputy Administrator Nygaard, do you have any comments?
Just one comment, I wanted to thank Holly and her team for keeping us corralled, and it's and it's been very engaging, and it's also allowed us to be very collaborative between all the different departments in the city hall, as well as, um, the public and the fire department coming in and giving their, their input. And so it's really a, a pretty collective document, and I think we're making a lot of progress, so thank you.
Thank you. City Attorney Wells, do you have any comments?
No comment, but to say, um, I, I know that this process is difficult, and I really appreciate all of your patience with me as we move through, and if there's anything that you want to see, for example, we'll be looking at the ground cover definition, anything like that, please make sure you get the planner an email that describes something, you know, whatever it might be that you're focused on, so we can, um, hopefully get that in front of the commission as a whole.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown, do you have any comments this evening?
Uh, thank her, uh, Doc, for coming out, uh, I just ask you to encourage other people to come out and see this process. I think people will be amazed how this process work, and be more informed and willing to get more involved in the city. And I especially thank to Holly, um, to the city attorney, she's been keeping me straight for about six or seven years now, and she was missing in action for a while there and stuff, so it's nice to see you again and, uh, keep me on track. Thanks, everyone, for the participation.
Commissioner Len Gill, do you have any comments this evening?
Yes, I wanted to thank the attorney and her office for doing such a great job on rewriting this code. I know it's a big headache, but it's wonderful, and I am looking forward to the twenty, training on the twenty-ninth. Uh, I'm still recovering from back surgery, and I've found that even sitting this long is a bit much, so I'm gonna go take my happy pill and go to bed.
Thank you, and, uh, hope you get better soon. Commissioner Stafford, do you have any comments?
Uh, other than thank you to the city attorney, thank you, Dr. Martin, for being here, and thank you for everyone else on the commission for the work you put in.
Thank you. Chair Seals, thank you, Holly, once again. Thank you Commissioners Brown, Stafford, and Langill for your participation tonight, and as always, Dr. Martin, thank you as well. I am really happy that our new city planner is moving forward at spectacular rates, so thank you very much. This is a big job jump, and, uh, I think you're the most qualified person in the room to do it.
Thank the city administrator we've had us around today.
Oh, yeah, and, uh, our, uh, infrastructure tour today, uh, that Commissioner Brown and I went on with, uh, City Administrator Nygaard was very informative. See, I see lots of possibilities for the future of the Menard Center. The library, I think it's doing pretty good the way it is, with maybe a few minor tweaks in the future, but we'll have to see on that one, but I definitely think that twenty to thirty years from now, the Menard Center is gonna be more city center than the shopping malls that we have now as city center. So with that statement, I think the Menard could grow into something for the community that is way beyond what we see today. So with that, with no further business at hand, I'm adjourning this meeting unless objection is raised. Hearing no objection, the meeting is adjourned, it's.